We are on.
Good evening. The Tuesday, June 18th, Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting is now in order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Kate, could I have a roll call, please? Gary Cunningham, Sean Peer is absent, Steve Griffiths,
Here.
Miles Schlesinger,
Here.
Josh Brainard,
Here.
Marie McFarland is absent, and Patty Crowen.
Here.
Any agenda changes or revisions, Lindsay?
None.
None. Okay. We have the minutes from our regular meeting of June 4th. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move we accept the minutes from the June 4th meeting as written.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions, discussion on those? Nope. Okay. Final orders, resolutions, or written communications? Anything?
Nothing on the agenda today.
Nope. All right. We did have last meeting an appeal of a planning director's administrative decision approving a geologic hazard report for a single-family dwelling. It was continued to tonight's meeting. We had a motion at the last meeting to keep the public record open until June 12th. There will be no public comment tonight, although we will have some deliberations on this issue. So commissioners, any questions for staff or legal counsel?
What did we receive in the way of written communications afterwards?
I couldn't hear the question.
I said what did we receive in the way of written communications?
There were two written letters that were provided in your packet, one from Becky Moffett and the other from the appellant.
I have a question for our attorney. I think the last meeting I asked about the previous Luba decision, and you said that was under a different code.
Yes.
Could you explain to all of us what is meant by that?
Well, if you look at the comp plan, you'll see that environmental overlay is stricken from the comp plan, and that's what was being implemented at the time that appeal occurred in 1999. And so that section was removed and replaced with the section that is the subject of this application. So it's not the same code. It may have been same property, but it was not under this code.
Do you have any other comments or concerns regarding legal issues that have been raised that we need to think about?
There isn't too much here. There's, I made a comment last time I probably shouldn't have, but if our code said that it's a jurisdictional defect to not strictly comply with the requirements for an appeal, I would have advised you to dismiss the appeal because they didn't really articulate a basis for the appeal. But our code doesn't say the words jurisdictional defect, and the Luba cases are pretty clear that if you really want to hold somebody to that standard, you got to use those words. So the appeal questions, the, you know, geotech report, your planning director has basically stated that, you know, the geotech report has everything that it's supposed to have. If you look at the code, there's really only two areas. One, the city can, or the city is supposed to determine where the bluff is under the code. And then if the city, the planning director does not determine where the bluff is, then the geotech determines where the bluff is. And then the other issue I see is that the planning director is specifically authorized to basically hire a geotech of the city's, you know, employ basically, and have them review the report and look for flaws and things like that. So that's really the only issues that I see. The statements in the appeal that was originally filed were kind of vague, and some of the subsequent submissions by others were more detailed and called into question certain things. But again, the city's not passing on the geotech report. We're not, it's not our report. But if you wanted staff to have it reviewed, staff is expressly allowed to do that. The attorney for the applicant stated that, well, but isn't there a timeframe on this? If the 120-day rule applies, council would have to act on an appeal by August, Kate, do you remember?
August 6th, I believe.
August 6th. So it could be appealed to the city council. And the city council can determine to review the matter de novo. That is, as if nothing had happened before. So if the council felt that they wanted more information, like an independent geotech to review it, the council could call it up and do that. You could, as the planning commission, remand it to the planning director to have that done. If you did that, though, there probably wouldn't be time to have the, have it come back through the process. Just for your consideration, that's.
So just so I'm clear, the ordinance requires a complete geotech report.
Yes.
But it doesn't require an evaluation and decision on the accuracy of that report?
That's, the staff's position is that we're not stating, again, it's kind of like, if the applicant's house falls into the ocean, it's not on the city. We're not blessing the report and then buying that liability. We're basically making sure that it has everything that it's supposed to have. Now, obviously, people can disagree, and if they make the case that the applicant says, the geotech says this, and that, you know, other competent substantial evidence provided by another geotech says something different, they could do that, and they could bring that through the process. And then we would just simply determine which one to believe. But we're not standing behind the geotech. We're not guaranteeing that this is going to cause this building not to fall into the sea.
So I went back and reviewed the code chapter language, and what struck me was, and I'm just going to read it verbatim, "The city assumes no responsibility for the quality or accuracy of a geotechnical report." So the recourse would be really if they wanted to appeal and request that the city council direct for an additional geotech report at city expense. Is that?
Well, again, you, we're talking about what you can do.
Right.
You can uphold the appeal, you know, finding that the appellant, not the applicant, but the appellant stated sufficient grounds or whatever, and then, you know, reject it and send it back to the planning director. You could send it back to the planning director for additional information, like I suggested, if you say you ought to get an independent geotech review. Or you can find that the appeal is not well-taken, and that there's, the staff is telling you there's nothing missing from the geotech report. That doesn't mean that the city council couldn't call it up, or the appellant couldn't file an appeal to the city council. There's still time to do that. We just have to meet an August 6th deadline, which is perfectly doable to go up. And the council could say, we want to see an independent geotech report to review this. So, and that's what the option is at this point.
One more question. But what you're saying, though, if we do go that route and bring in our own geotech report, we're kind of buying some kind of responsibility for the product at the end.
No, we're not. We're expressly saying the code we're not. What we'd be bringing in the geotech would basically be to do the peer review of what was submitted.
It would be a third-party review of what was submitted. We would not process our own geotech.
And my suggestion is there really isn't time to send it back to do that. If it goes to the council on an appeal, I'd say we probably would see something like that. But I don't know that it'll go to council on an appeal, but it may.
Wouldn't you expect, I'm going to ask this, and I don't know if you're going to answer, wouldn't you expect, though, the appellant, the peeler would be the one to desire that report if he wanted it and start it, start that ball rolling?
Well, there's nothing that requires, I mean, you can file an appeal without going out and hiring a geotech.
Right.
When we get to the city council, as before you, you know, when we look at whether or not there's substantial competent evidence in the record to support the decision, we look for substantial competent evidence, not just mere statements of layperson saying, I don't like this, or I don't like that. We look for evidence which is, you know, substantial and competent.
Okay.
Gary, while you're talking, you did say something during the hearing that bothered me, and it was something like, well, you're going to live in the house. That's great. I'll vote for this. Living in the house is not one of the applicable approval criteria.
I realize that. It's a matter to me of the person's belief in the product that they're selling.
Yeah. I mean, community is important, but it's not one of the criteria.
I realize that.
All right. Other comments, questions, concerns from the commissioners?
It just seems to me that, you know, we're really kind of choosing our tail. We've got a proven professional that has a great track record in and around here working in this exact area, which is very valuable as far as geology and real estate. An engineer concerned, at least in my professional experience, I really don't think that we need to go the additional expense. I think we should refer to our staff's decision on this, who reviewed the first very competent report thoroughly, and go that route.
Okay. Others?
I agree.
Steve, you have anything? Okay. Well, it seems to me that the decision's based on the content of the report, and it isn't the planning director's role to evaluate the accuracy of the report, just that it's complete. I didn't see any assertion in the appeal that the submitted geotech report doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance. And I don't think it's our role to try to delve into the geologic report to figure out if it's correct or not. Our job's to consider the appeal based on whether or not the planning director correctly interpreted the ordinance. So, can I have a motion?
A motion that we approve the geologic hazard report? Or what are we?
We're
Move to deny.
Deny the appeal.
Move to deny the appeal.
And uphold the planning director's decision.
And uphold the planning director's decision.
And I'd like to second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Just incidentally, also at the hearing, we had one of you object to either continuing or leaving the record open. And I know that the chair pointed this out, that we are required to either leave the record open for seven days or continue it for seconds, for seven days, if it is the initial evidentiary hearing. We're required to do that by state law. So generally here, we don't knowingly violate a statute applicable to our public office. That's called a misdemeanor, so we don't.
Okay. So, planning staff will bring back written findings for approval, correct? And we'll sign it at the next meeting. Okie doke. Old business. We had a lengthy packet of information. Thanks so much, Lindsay, for taking up.
I really can't take credit for all of that. I started the application materials for the meeting, and Anne-Marie did complete it. So that is our very thorough senior planner.
That was nice. It was slightly longer than the Mueller report. We have a sign code amendment work-study planned, I understand. So Anne-Marie, are you going to chat with us about that, introduce it?
I am.
Thank you.
I have been, just by way of introduction, I have started at the north end of town, and I've been working my way down to the south end of town. And I'm probably, let's see, the last place I visited was the Nell Scott Antique House, and that was this afternoon. So that's how far I've gotten. So I've chatted with a number of business owners. Definitely there is concern in the business community with the current sign ordinance. And so I just want to, as we're going through making a revised sign ordinance, it would be good if we keep in mind all of the business community comments, as well as our desires for aesthetics, lack of clutter, et cetera.
Can you summarize their comments in a nutshell?
I can.
Do they fall into certain categories?
Yes.
But keeping in mind this is televised, and there's certain language you can't use.
Thank you for that, Richard. The, to my surprise, I have not received very many comments about permanent signage. In fact, if I'm recalling correctly, the only comment I've received about permanent signage had to do with a digital display, and our current code requires digital displays to be static for at least one hour. And the one person that commented to me about that thought that the one-hour length was too long, and felt that we needed to look at that. The rest of the comments all pertain to temporary signs, specifically feather banners and portable slash A-frame slash sandwich board signs, and/or their placement in the right-of-way. So in preparing the materials that I gave you, there's one about best practices in regulating temporary signs, and I thought that was something, had some good information. There was also one that I gave you about nighttime brightness of message centers. I've done a lot of additional reading, because I didn't want to overwhelm you. I've immersed myself in signs, and I know way more about signs now than I ever thought I would. But many, there have been many studies done on digital signs in particular, and they have essentially found that we can have, if the planning commission and city council would so desire, we can have a display change more often than one hour without being a distraction or a safety hazard to drivers. I believe the national standard is 30 seconds. And that.
Can I ask you a question about the feather banners?
Yes.
They are considered by our code to be temporary signs, correct?
Yes. So our code considers the feather banners, flags, windsocks, and the portable signs as temporary.
In your discussions with the owners, did you get a sense that they consider them temporary? Because we have some that have been out for years. I'm not sure what our definition of temporary is, but they don't seem terribly temporary unless it's simply a banner that's taken in at night?
Temporary basically is designed such that it's not permanent. So it's not permanently affixed to a building, a wall, a window. If it's, if it's, if it's a feather banner or a flag, and it stays displayed all the time, it's still temporary. Most of them, however, and I have, I'm paying a lot of attention to feather banners and flags now, these days in Lincoln City, and everywhere else, as a matter of fact. Interestingly enough, you do not see very many feather banners in Portland, but Forest Grove and Hillsborough are loaded with feather banners. Why, I don't know. But, but, so, yeah, so most of the feather banners in Lincoln City now, they go in and out at night. I have not, when I'm out and about at night, when the businesses are closed, I don't see any feather banners.
So I guess the confusion I'm having is a temporary sign to me means something that is put out before you get your permanent sign made, or it's a sign that's indicating something that is maybe seasonal, like a farmer's market, or something that's only certain times of the year. But our code defines temporary as simply something that's moved inside at night? That's a temporary sign?
No, it doesn't even say that it's moved inside at night. Let me, it's just, it's basically, it's not permanently affixed.
Well, our, under the definitions, it says temporary sign means a sign intended to be displayed for a specific period of time only, and then removed. And I guess my question is, is that a temporary specified period of time? Is that like daylight hours? Or is that a, you know, like from May to June type of?
And the definition does not include such a thing. So that would be something that you would want to?
I think it's been both. Okay? So we used to have a sign, a 60-day temporary sign banner. I think we still have this.
We still do.
Through a permit. We have this thing which, you know, accords with what you're saying as a definition. Temporary, it's limited period of time, 60 days. We also have signs that are allowed, like flags, they're signs. They're temporary in that they are not made of concrete or other products that are going to last a long time. They're required to be, when they've become dilapidated, they're required to be removed or replaced, which is what you're probably seeing more often, is some temporary signs that have been out there so long that they really need to be replaced. But I think temporary sign is including both those things that have 60-day time limits, as well as things that come out in the morning and then go back. They don't leave those A-frame signs out there either.
Yeah.
They're temporary. They're not permanently affixed to anything. Hopefully, they're secured somehow, so the wind doesn't carry them away. But, yeah, I don't think it's intended just to include the thing that has a 60-day time period.
Okay. So maybe we can stick a pin in that, because that might, that definition might need to be separated out a bit.
Okay.
Not tonight, but at some point.
I'll make a note about definition. And, not to get into it, but what are you thinking, Patty, in that definition? Are you wanting to see more of a timeframe?
That definition is pretty broad. And I think that sometimes these codes are written in such a way that it's difficult for someone to follow the rules, because they're not sure what falls into what, or they lump things together that perhaps should be separated out. So, for example, if we're talking about a temporary sign that a business puts up because they're a brand-new business and they don't have their permanent sign, I'm not so sure that that should be under the same category as a feather banner that's put out every morning at 8:00 in the morning and taken in at 9:00 at night, versus a flag that's put out on certain days of the, of the year as a holiday. So I'm just thinking, I think we should just think about it. Not tonight, but at some point, we should think about how these definitions are put into practice.
Okay. Okay. So that was the first item, basically, was an appropriate number of allowed temporary signs. Just for your edification, right now, each business is allowed, and I'm focusing on businesses. Of course, there are allowances for residential, but I'm focusing on businesses right now. So each business is allowed up to three flags and two windsocks, or they may, and one A-frame. And I'm using A-frame interchangeably for A-frame, or sandwich board, or the sidewalk sign that.
Is that more than what is currently allowed?
No, that's what's currently allowed.
They're currently allowed, three, three flags, two windsocks, and a sandwich board?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, with the, with the caveat that they may substitute two of the flags for two banners, feather banners. The temporary banner is allowed with a permit for up to 60 days. And that's also a separate allowance.
And is this tied, I'm sorry, one, just one question. Is this tied to frontage?
No. This doesn't, this is simply per business.
So any, any business, regardless of their frontage on the road, can have this number of signs, banners?
Yes, except that the A-frame is only allowed per legal lot.
And one of the questions from the council for review is, is, is it appropriate, is three the right number of flags? Is the allowance for feather banners, should be made permanent because it expires here in a couple months?
October 8.
Should it be based upon a legal lot standard? Should it be based upon a front square, number of front-footage requirement? That's the questions that the council wants you to help answer, because these specific issues, especially as it relates to flags and these feather banners, was kind of referred to you. That's why your planner's been working on this so much, because it was specifically asked to look at this.
And the businesses have indicated, probably, I would say most of the businesses have indicated that probably three flags and two windsocks seems excessive. The general consensus, I believe, in, in all of my communications thus far, is that they feel some type of combination of up to two or three, combination of a feather banner and a flag and a portable and?
Sandwich board.
I have a question in terms of your interviewing and meeting with business owners. I noticed just my own personal experience driving or walking through town, that often temporary signs like the banners, feather banners and so forth, obscure my view of other businesses or shops in the area. And I was wondering if that is a concern that's been brought up by any, any of the business owners, saying, you know, the guy down the road, you know, two stores away from me, he's got all these feather banners up, and people driving by can't see my store.
No, that hasn't come up once.
But I was wondering if that might be the reason why they're saying, you know, maybe three feather banners and two of these, or is it a bit too much?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speculate. I think probably more clutter, you know, that just, that just seems, especially if every business is allowed, if every business took advantage of the current code, every business could have three flags and two windsocks. And you drive down 101. And an A-frame. Now, and
Lot of record.
Pardon me?
Per lot of record, yeah. The A-frame is per lot of record.
Yeah. Well, it would be, it would perhaps be illustrative if we had a photograph and somebody photoshopped in how many maximum could be on the businesses, and we could see what that looks like.
I have a question about that that's kind of related to it, and that is, in the materials you gave us for the design standards, one of the key issues was saying, we need to make sure that we don't, in a natural location where people come to Lincoln City because of the ocean and the mountains and the trees, we want to make sure that we don't obscure some sightlines to the ocean, for example, on the north-south routes. But I didn't see any kind of, I was looking for in the material on signs, saying that if you're in a town that attracts tourists because it's if you're in a town that attracts tourists because it's natural attractions, here are some considerations you need to take in terms of where you place signage. And I do know that there's some off-site signs at the north or the south end of town that obscure people who are driving past their view of the celest space, for example. And I was thinking, I would like to see that issue addressed in the sign code in some way.
Okay. So specifically, placement of signs so as to not obscure ocean view?
Ocean views, yeah.
Or natural views.
Or natural views.
I would like to point out, in one of the packets that Anne Marie attached in her materials this evening, it does summarize, I think it's the top five or top six reasons why jurisdictions go through sign code amendments, and one being aesthetics. And I, I would think that if someone responded to that survey that was addressing that, that they probably would have grouped it into aesthetics. But aesthetics does seem to be the biggest purpose for major code revisions. Another thing I'd like the council, or the, the, the commission to consider as we work, study this for a couple meetings and, and go to a public hearing, is, let's be in the forefront of this, so that we're not, in five years, when a new type of sign comes out, having to go through and, and reanalyze the, the wheel. Temporary banner flags are a new type of sign that have came out since, I would say, within the last seven to eight years, and become general practice. So, um, this is something that we're addressing now, and we, we wouldn't have needed to address it, you know, in two thousand and five, if we were amending our sign code then. So if we can try to keep, um, forethought into what is, um, being able to be some level of predictability, or some level of flexibility for new typologies, so that we don't just define ourselves into a whole that, when the sign, um, companies come out with a new method, um, that everyone wants to buy, that Lincoln City's stuck, you know, ten years back.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment, and I thought about that when I was reading through the material and got to the section on projected signs. And it struck me that that's a new phenomenon that, that is becoming very popular, and it's probably fairly inexpensive, um, to, to use. And, you know, there's the issue of nighttime sky to think about in those types of things as well. So I appreciate that comment, Lindsay.
I have a question of Richard. Um, on, the banners are almost always located in the public right-of-way. I mean, it seems to me, I, I'm a walker, and me and Carolyn go out there, and you've got your arms up like this to keep the banners from slapping you in the face as you're walking by them. And is that, is that something that we can address?
Currently, the code, currently, our code makes it a Class A violation to place, uh, you know, a sign in the right-of-way. So, a Class A is punishable by a two thousand dollar a day fine.
Are we talking sidewalks, right-of-way?
If, well, it depends on where the right-of-way is.
It, it varies throughout the city, depending on the roadway.
But here's, here's the gist of it. If it's not your property, uh, it's probably in the right-of-way. So, most property, I mean, people go, where's the right-of-way? Most property owners know where their property line is. And if they're putting it off their property, they're probably putting it in the right-of-way, and that's a Class A violation.
Well, I, I, my brain jumps to the conclusion, and maybe it's a wrong one, that the sidewalk up and down 101 is the public right-of-way. And that's exactly where I'm talking about, we get slapped in the face by the flags all the time.
And I, too, have experienced that, and, and it is a code violation if, in fact, that sidewalk is in the right-of-way. And we have been talking about enforcing that section of, of the code. One of the ways that I think ODOT has handled that is to have a minimum height requirement for, uh, their banners. When, if you were having a banner or some kind of, uh, item in the ODOT right-of-way with a permit, I think, is it eight feet, or seven or eight feet?
Eight feet.
Yeah. So, um, I don't think we actually have, we, we may have eight foot of clearance for certain, uh, mounted signs on the side of a building, but I'm not sure that we have a temporary sign clearance level, 'cause, uh, obviously, if, if flags and feather banners are higher, they won't be slapping you in the face, at least.
So, so the, the holes that are along 101, that occasionally get flags placed in them, are in the right-of-way?
They are.
Okay.
And just a little more information about right-of-way, um, because I've spoken at length with, um, members of ODOT about this. ODOT does not allow anything in its right-of-way. No ifs, ands, or buts. ODOT does not allow anything in its right-of-way. I was exploring with, uh, the Public Works Director, possible language to allow signage in the city right-of-way, uh, under certain parameters, such as, uh, it's not in the clear vision triangle area, uh, it doesn't obstruct or strike vehicular or pedestrian traffic, and it has, um, and it provides, it doesn't obstruct ADA accessibility requirements. And she, at first blush, seemed to, um, be amenable to looking at such language. ODOT does not have any provisions for anything like that. However, uh, they said that the city could take over jurisdiction of the ODOT sidewalks, and in which case, we would then, um, we would then be able to, uh, to have our, our sign code appropriately. So, I guess the, the upshot is, is regardless of what we do with our sign code for city right-of-way, even if we don't a, address anything to do with 101, it's state law that there cannot be any signage in the right-of-way. And they don't differentiate between anything.
Yeah.
So, flags, feather banners, portables, it, it doesn't matter what it is, essentially, they, and they told me, they said, for the most part, we look the other way. They haven't issued any banner or flag permits, he said, in over eight years. And if they receive complaints, then, then they will go out and start citing people.
So for our edification at our next meeting, would it be possible to, since the majority of the businesses in town are along 101, would it be possible to get a map that shows the extent of the ODOT right-of-way?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I can do that.
I mean, just so we know what we're talking about here.
All of it.
Well, I...
I mean, 101. For the most part, just as a general rule, for the most part, where, wherever the front of the building is, that's also the edge of the right-of-way. There's a few places that have about two feet. Uh, for instance, the, um, Marcy's and Sunray, they have between the edge of their building, uh, from the edge of their building out two feet. That two-foot strip is not right-of-way, which is why Sunray has, uh...
Their A-frame in that spot.
Their A-frame, right, abutting the edge of the building, because that two-foot area. However, if you go down the street, for instance, to Bob's Beach Books, the front of Bob's Beach Books is the right-of-way line. Candyland, Rocking Horse, um, all, that whole strip, the front of their building is the edge of right-of-way. American Mattress Store. And that's an interesting one, because their sidewalk, their landscape strip that has their permanent signs, that is not right-of-way.
Okay.
That's, that's their private property.
So, it'd be nice to see that.
Okay.
What I think, instead of one map, because of the deviations and, and adjustments and changes along right-of-way on 101, I would propose that we pull up our GIS and just take a look at it as a group.
Well, if, yeah, if we can do that, that would be great. Yeah, I don't, I don't need to have a paper map if it's GIS.
I just wanna point out that if we were to, I don't think you should hold your breath that we're gonna take over ODOT's right-of-way.
No, no, I, I don't want to take over ODOT.
Because of all the ADA access issues that they have, we certainly don't want...
No, no, no. That is certainly not my intent.
That's what I wanna talk to you about. You mentioned ADA accessibility. There's nothing in ODOT's code that says you can't have, that says you can have an A-frame in the middle of the sidewalk that blocks something in a real chair.
You can't. They prohibit anything in their right-of-way.
So, I think that's, that's the answer.
However, they don't enforce.
Right.
And so, we can enforce if we take over the right-of-way.
Well, I...
So that's kind of the, the catch twenty-four.
Considering this is a tourist town, a lot of people use our sidewalks, and they need to be accessible.
Well, and that's where we have, with ADA access, we have a couple other measures that the city could look into in regards to making sure, um, it doesn't need to be regulated through the sign code.
I, I will say that, um, most of the businesses, as I've been out and about, have, uh, come into compliance with the feather banners and, and any other signage in the right-of-way. And most of them have removed their signage from the right-of-way. There's only, there's a handful that still have their signage in the right-of-way, but most of the rest of them have, have voluntarily complied.
And, and what about the businesses that have, um, displays of things they sell in the store, out on the...
That's a, a different code, however, the rule is the same from ODOT. So, it, it, ODOT does not allow outdoor display of merchandise in their right-of-way. Uh, I would say, I can think of two businesses that specifically have a number of items in their display, but I do not believe their displays are in the ODOT right-of-way. I believe they're on private property.
Okay.
Are they allowed?
But they're in violation of a separate code.
It is an ordinance we have not started working on yet.
Oh, okay. To be continued. Go ahead, Miles.
Are, are, uh, outdoor displays, even on your own property, a setback, for example, from the front door, are they allowed under city, uh, codes?
They are under certain parameters. There, there's a section of Title seventeen that, that talks about outdoor display.
And I can reference that for anyone watching that wants to know more. Um, that would be... Where is it? It's in supplemental, isn't it? I'll have to get back to that. Okay.
There is something in Title seventeen about it.
There's a permit in 504-150 for temporary permits for temporary display of merchandise outside.
Okay.
There's, however, there's something in Title seventeen that's not temporary. It's strictly outdoor display of, outdoor, outdoor sales display? I forget, but...
Okay.
But it's specific to Title seventeen, and it's not temporary.
Okay. Um, one other, one other thing that struck me in going through the material you provided was that many cities that have historic districts have specific prohibitions and requirements for signs in those areas, and I don't think our sign code has anything that talks about historic districts.
The city, the city does not have any historic districts that are adopted, either through a Main Street Association or through the Oregon State of Historical Preservation.
But isn't shippo coming?
We're gonna be doing a survey of structures, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, what the code does currently have, though, is, we've established our pearls, which we've identified as our historic towns that, that make up the, the body of Lincoln City. And so, um, as we move through the sign code ordinance, if the, um, commission finds or feels that there is, the pearls are deserving of having different regulations, and some already do, like Taft and Nell Scott have different sign standards than, um, the pearls that have not gone through a, a pearl-specific planning process. That would be something that the commission can, consider, and you'll see in our next work study on design standards, that that is something that is proposed for structural design features, um, to be a little more, um, carefully considered in pearls out, and beyond the strings.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, let's see, so where was I? Um, one of the, so, that, that's something for the commission to consider, is if they want to, if the commission wants to explore any language for, uh, parameters to allow any type of signage or sign structure, or encroachments of signs or sign structures into the right-of-way. Or if you would like to keep the current prohibition of such things. Because even if, uh, there are businesses that aren't along Highway 101, uh, that would be under city right-of-way. So, that would be something for, um, the commission to think about and, um, come back at our next work study. Another item for the commission to consider, as, as I've gone out, the way the current code defines banner, um, it defines it as, as temporary by the definition of, um, the And many of our businesses, by that definition, have banners, uh, because the material of their sign is that cloth canvas plastic, and so it meets the definition of banner. If possible, so that we don't have to make all these businesses, businesses get something other than a banner, um, I would like for the commission to consider, perhaps, some type of language, um, that we could allow banners as permanent signage, provided they, um, met the, the allowance for permanent signage.
So, meet the allowance, you mean size-wise primarily?
Yeah, as long as it was permanently affixed, you know, in, I'm thinking something along the lines of, when you think of a temporary banner, it's usually tied up with strings at, at, at four corners. Many of the, most of the businesses that have banners that they're utilizing as permanent signage are actually affixed to the wall with, um, bolts in many of the rivets around it. So it's, it is permanently affixed, but because of the material that it's made out of...
It falls into the...
It falls into that temporary banner, uh, definition. So by the current code, technically, uh, they're not allowed. But I would like to perhaps explore, even though they're, they're still made out of that material, if they're permanently affixed to the wall, you know, in more than four places or something, some type of language that we can get those to be permanent, so that those folks don't...
Does it make sense?
Yeah, so, and, I mean, it could be that we adjust the definition of permanent sign to include that material, as long as it's permanently affixed.
Um, commissioners, I would like to go back to the question about outdoor display. It appears that we do allow it in one zone, which is our general commercial zone. Under Lincoln City Municipal Code seventeen point thirty-two point one-one-zero subsection C, it states, "Outdoor sales displays are allowed but shall not be located in any yard, landscaped area, or off-street parking or loading area," which is required by the title. I just wanted to loop back around.
Not in a landscaped area?
In a yard, landscaped area, off-street parking, or loading area.
So, even if it's not in the right-of-way, but if it's in a, a landscaped portion of the parking lot, it's not allowed?
As long as it's a, if it's, if it's not a required landscaped area for the site plan.
Shall not be. It says shall not be in any yard, landscaped area.
That's up to that property owner to figure out. Okay. Clear as mud.
It could be there.
They can't, we require yards and parking and, and landscaped areas, that, so they would be able to put it in an area that's not one of those.
So you would show on your site plan, here is our outside display area. As long as, you not go put outside displays in your required handicap parking spaces or your required landscaping. That's the thing. I actually had a case on, on this where we had somebody who was taking his required parking and displaying... and displaying vehicles for sale there, and they said, well, that's my display area. No, it's not. That's your required parking.
So you go back to the site plan that they originally got approved?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Making notes here. Any other comments from, from owners that you want to share with us?
Uh, no, for, for the most part, well, yes. Because one of the items that I, that I think it would be important for the commission to consider is if our current sign allowance for permanent signs is enough. So, um, basically for a, a wall-type sign, the maximum is a hundred square feet, and that's based on one square foot of, um, building frontage per, or, per, one square foot per one linear foot of building frontage. So if you have a, if your building has fifty feet of street frontage, then you could have up to fifty square feet of, um, wall signage. And so the question for the commission is, is that enough? Is one square foot per one linear foot enough, and is the maximum of one hundred square feet enough? And I would, um, come right behind saying that with the fact that none of the business owners, interestingly enough, have commented on permanent signage allowances, with the exception of one. They all are concerned with temporary signage because for, I believe for two reasons. One is the expense of permanent signage. They're more expensive to purchase and install and maintain than temporary signage. And this is, this is the feedback that I've received from them. It's not my personal opinion. And then the second would be, uh, many of the buildings, um, are old enough that installation of permanent signage to the walls or the roof, um, structurally and the finish, the, the, uh, exterior material would not support permanent signage. And many of the business owners lease from, um, property owners who are, uh, not in the area. And, um, so I've been, I've been told that the, the, um, the expense for, um, up, upgrading the building to allow installation of permanent signage is more than the businesses, the small business owners, uh, would be able to handle, and that is why they rely on the temporary signage.
And, hmm, a little more information on that, but the building code does regulate signage as far as wind load factor and, uh, safety for that permanent signage. And so, just, I believe that that is where some of the hindrance is coming from, is having to meet some of those structural engineering standards when, for eight hours a day, you could put out a temporary sign and, and, and return it.
Okay, and, and that isn't, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state the obvious, and that isn't the owner's responsibility to make sure that his building can structurally support a sign?
The business owner or the property owner?
Property owner. The building owner. Okay.
But back to your question, I think the, uh, signage allotment, the size for a permanent sign, that's fine.
Okay.
I've got a question on the Nelscott Gap area where the parking and the buildings are in front of it, but the highway doesn't go, go by the direct front of the, uh, build, uh, buildings. Is there, is that considered high, uh, state highway or, or not?
I know that the planting strip that separates the parking lots and the travelways is state right of way. I'm not sure if the state relinquished their old right of way that was in front of the Nelscott business and added that as private property or not. So that would be something we can focus on when we bring the, the ODOT map to the next meeting, as well as make sure we go specifically to that area for you.
That area is used to place banners, yeah.
Yes, I'm aware.
And I did have, because the Nelscott Antique House specifically, specifically asked me that question about where their right of way was, because they wanted to put out a portable sign. And they have a feather banner right now, and so, and I just visited with them today. And so that is on my list to look at tomorrow and see where their right of way line is, and I'll look at the, at the other side as well. And so definitely have that information for you at the next meeting.
Did any of the business owners have any comments about, um, hand-painted signs or painting directly on the buildings? I know we have a new business downtown that did a, a mural on the front of the building, basically. Anybody make any?
No one, no one made any comments on those.
Okay.
Is there a prohibition against that? I guess I.
Mm-mm. It's considered an original art display and it doesn't need a permit. And there are no.
It doesn't need a permit?
Mm-mm.
Not believe that murals, murals are determined as a sign?
Correct. And I think, I think that's all I have for you on signs. What would you, so you've given me some things to research and come back with you on, um, would you, what is your direction? Would you like me to come back with some suggestions, or do you want to come back with suggestions for me that then I can?
Well, our, our timeline is what regarding the public hearing on this? Is it scheduled for July or August?
Believe that we have this tentatively scheduled for August sixth.
Okay, so we have a couple more meetings on this. I, I think it would be a good idea for the commissioners to spend a little more time with the information that you provided to us. Review the existing sign codes and see if there are suggestions for that. If you have suggestions for rewording anything or additions to it, I think that would be helpful to have as well.
Okay.
And then at the next meeting, we can, um, sort of dive into the specifics of it. Does that make sense, commissioners?
Just one more question in a general format. The business owners don't seem to have a backup about, they're not, let's say, concerned about the signage as we've got it right now in our, in our current rules and regulations. They, they feel adequately capable. I mean, I, I guess I'm trying to make sure I understand their input on this.
I believe, based upon the feedback that I've received, um, that for, for permanent signage, I don't believe that any of them have any issues with, with our allowances for permanent signage. The one comment I received, um, probab, uh, about the digital display would lead me to believe that perhaps we should look at our one hour and see if we can modify that. And, and then the rest of the comments are on the temporary signage, and they feel very strongly that the temporary signage is what draws in the business.
Okay, one more quick question. You, you were talking about getting ahead of the curve on this. Okay, can you give us some examples when we meet again on what you're talking about of getting ahead of the curve? The kind of stuff that might be coming or, you know.
New sign types. Well, I know that Neon, Neon has really taken a, uh, it's got a comeback coming. And we also saw the projecting signs similar to what you see at Christmas, where people can project snowflakes on their structure. I, those, I've seen people with NFL teams and other things that I, I see that that could potentially become something. We also have, um, blade signs that are permanent attached signs that could go in, potentially into the right of way, that are more focused towards your pedestrian scale, that we may or may not allow right now under our attached sign. And so that's something to consider. But I do think that we should potentially reach out to some of the sign companies to see what they're seeing as, as coming out. And then there's a lot of information in the packet tonight from Sign Research Institute, I believe. They've got numerous, numerous, numerous free reports, research studies, and what's going on, and, um, I would just spend some time, uh, paying attention specifically to the regulating temporary signage that was included in your packet tonight, but going on to their website as well and seeing what else you might find that you would think would be interesting. What I would propose is that we could potentially start a draft of, um, staff-recommended amendments to the ordinance, uh, and then get in with the Planning Commission-recommended amendments to the ordinance, and have that draft prepared before we notice for public hearings, so that the, the, the public is aware of where the Planning Commission and where staff is, is trying to stand on how, how we address this. And, um, you know, take the beating.
I was looking at that University of Cincinnati data out there, and, and they seemed like their responses were the people, the businesses wanted to see more signage. They wanted to have, that, that their signs weren't big enough, and that people drive by and don't see their product. And, I mean, that was the comments over and over again, and yet our, our internal people don't seem to think of it that way, unless they think that the temporary signs are where they'll get that coverage.
And, and that is where they believe that they, they draw in the business, are those temporary signs are very attractive and, um, not attractive as in, you know, uh, uh, an attraction. The temporary signs act as an attraction. Perhaps because they're, I don't know, colorful and, and bright, and they move in the wind.
And a take-home message out of that whole study that I picked up on was that people's perception of the quality of the store is based on the quality of the sign. So, you know.
Think more permanent, not flashy.
Or, or not even just that, but maintained signs that aren't, you know, worn out and frayed and tattered. That, that doesn't draw people in or give them the perception that the store has a quality feel to it. So I, you know, I, I appreciated the information that you provided. It was very insightful in terms of people's perceptions and businesses' perceptions on what drives customers or, or what drives a customer to a particular store. There's only one other thing that I think we need to, to talk about at our next meeting, and that's the whole issue of off-premise temporary signs. I don't know that our sign code talks much about that at all.
And unfortunately, it cannot, because that would be based upon content. The very fact that we call it an off-premise sign imply, states.
I think, let me give you a visual example. There's no such thing as off-premise signage anymore. If Burger King wanted to buy every sign space along one oh one to put up a Burger King sign, they could. We can't regulate the message on the sign. We can just regulate where the structure and placement of it is.
Okay.
So.
So as you enter, as you enter Lincoln City from the north on one oh one, you're bombarded with billboard after billboard after billboard of signs that aren't located there. Right? I mean, there's this, I don't know how many people probably end up in the pot store looking for Mo's Chowder because the sign is, is in their parking lot. So are, am I, is what you're saying, Lindsay, that we have no control over those types of signs?
We are not allowed to read the sign to determine if it complies with our standards. So it's time, place, and manner that really is what we need to focus on for our sign.
Okay, so if somebody owns that empty lot there and they want to put up a hundred different signs and charge the people for them, they can do that?
If they get their permits.
Well, undeveloped lots under our code are not allowed to have permanent signs. They can have temporary signs.
And, and the other, the other caveat to that is most of those billboards are in ODOT right of way, and that falls under ODOT's jurisdiction with, under their outdoor advertising program.
Okay.
And the city doesn't have any authority over that.
Sorry, I opened that key.
I'm not sure.
Is there ever any opportunity to provide ODOT with, uh, suggestions as to how they might want to change the management of those signs?
I'm sure that we could provide a comment letter to ODOT.
No, but seriously, do they ever have a review period, or do they?
That's a good question, and I, I've been in contact with the head of the outdoor advertising person, so I will ask.
Okay, so we have a game plan?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, um, new business design review standards work study.
Yeah, so, um, we have had the design review standards open for public comment now, um, going on eight days. I just wanted to remind the commission to, um, we will be looking at, uh, Design Review Standards Public Hearing on August sixth as well. If you would like to, um, we have tonight's work study as well as the July second's work study on this. I would recommend that we briefly review the design regulations tonight, wait until we get the, um, full gamut of public comments on that, and then, um, staff can prepare adjustments or edits after we have that.
When does that comment period close?
That comment period will close on Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I would like to ask the community to take some time. You can go to lincolncity dot, let me just make sure I get it here right. Uh, Lincoln, www.lincolncity.org. You can go to the homepage on the very front, and if you scroll towards the middle of the page, there's draft design standards open for public comment, survey link here. It will, the survey is established, so that you will need to review the draft standards to be able to comment on them. It's, um, more of a follow-up than the first visual aesthetic survey that was completed with the project. A few things that went through on the design standards. See here. We worked, you know, so there was a lot of context and understanding on the design standards update that was done through last summer, June and July. Uh, there was a design day that the city held, a lot of public outreach. Through July and November, there was focus on the desired form and function. That was through the visual preference worksheet, uh, workshop and questionnaire, as well as the, um, advisory committee meetings. And then we also had the code development and refinement that's been occurring since December of last year up until, uh, this month. And that mostly was with internal city staff, Anne Marie and I both getting up to speed on the project and learning where the community's intent and, and purpose and direction that was given. And then make, trying to make sure that we got the draft code out to public comment that really captured what we were reading as the primary goals of the, um, feedback from the design day. So, um, see if I can get through these pages a little quicker here. The key findings from the community engagement really focused on prioritizing pedestrian spaces, public realms, and how that, the buildings and parkings impact that public realm and the aesthetics of being in a space. Also, having a contiguous building fronts and standalone buildings, uh, or the, uh, appearance of standalone buildings and not a long linear wall right against our public right of way or sidewalk where we're walking. Some contemporary design, making sure that we kept a small scale for the scale of Lincoln City. Continuing to regulate large-scale commercial, making sure that multifamilies at a human scale. at a human scale addressing traditional building form, and the importance that multifamily can retain a coastal residential character. So, the public draft code used tables to abbreviate and simplify Title 17, Chapter 74. We also updated terms for clarity, improved some layout and heading styles for that. In regards to Form X, form, format and graphics, we revised the illustrations and tables for consistency, legibility, and to exemplify the complex standards or requirements that are actually in the written code. We also improved the consistency of the graphics so that they're reproducible when you photocopy a section of code or print something from the code. They are also a little more online compatible if you're reviewing Lincoln City municipal code through our website. There is a large amount of updates to the code, and what the draft regulations show is a clean chapter. We in-house do have, actually, I want to make sure, I'm, the existing code that we're currently practicing right now, before we adopt the new code, has no design review process. There's no requirements for what's required to have an application to know if you even comply with the design standards, and there was no expedited process for design review such as an administrative review option. So, the public draft code does add a new design review section. There is streamlined development, review types and procedures, and new thresholds for major and minor to expedite that review. That really was a process issue that I identified when I was first reviewing the code, going, oh, well, how do I process this even if you have to do design reviews? So, really wanted to create some clarity. There's three aspects to that process. There's administrative review, which is exterior alterations on an existing building, maybe you want to repaint, re-side, re-roof, and then also minor modifications and building additions. There's the quasi-judicial review, and this is all in the draft standards. This isn't applicable right now. That's where there's major modifications to an existing site or structure, or whether it's determined by the director or requested by an applicant. And that really would be like those, those projects that would really have a desire to be in front of the public for that public process so that they can understand why there might be some alterations or modifications from the specific prescriptive standards, but the design still needs the intent of quality design for Lincoln City. And then there's some exceptions from design review, which is our general maintenance, as well as single-family residential dwellings not have design regulations to them, and then exceptions for some existing legal nonconformities. There were, what we did for the multifamily residential zone under Chapter 1720 is we, the building design standards can now be found in 1774. There's no parking allowed between the street and the building. Landscape requirements are now a part of the parking areas for multifamily residential structures, and there's some site design standards that have been put into table form.
And was the density increased or the coverage of the lot increased for those multifamily?
So, the, for some reason, my PowerPoint just flipped on me. Hum bon. Yes. So, in the calculations for, all right, I'm gonna have to read this upside down. So, so the density, yes, that was the next slide before it went. So, the existing code, there was no minimum density for multifamily housing. It's calculated based upon a minimum lot area, 5,000 square feet for single family, 8,000 for duplex are the first two units of multifamily, and then additional minimum lot sizes, whether they were low, high, or mixed density. The public draft code currently has a flat minimum density of 25 units per acre for multifamily housing. It modifies the minimum lot sizes and also removed additional minimums for that public draft code. That was a recommendation from me that went forward. The difficulty in calculating density in a residential medium zone is difficult, to say the least. I think there's a, just in general, figuring out how to calculate whether you're 150 feet away from a commercial structure, but then the other part of your site, your density isn't. So, how do you split a site when they're trying to build multifamily, which is the intent of the zone? So, I ran some rough numbers for what the average density for multifamily zone would be. We came to the 25 as a minimum density. I do think that that'll be a conversation to be had, but it complies with the existing comprehensive plan. The multi-density zone is actually called our high-density residential zone in the comprehensive plan, and it's not intended to have single-family or low-density development within it. So, we want to try to bring back into our multifamily zones, multifamily structures, bring the single-family structures into single-family zones so that there's a protection of that neighborhood.
That's an issue we can address in the comprehensive plan.
When, well, this will be something, this will be coming up before the comprehensive plan, but most jurisdictions have a high-density residential and then medium and/or low-density residential. What we have is a single-family residential with a minimum 5,000 square foot lot or a 7,500 square foot lot. So, our medium and low-density is all under the single-family lands.
I think what I, what I meant to refer to is there, in Lincoln City, there are a lot of multifamily zones that have been developed as single-family residences. And I was wondering, maybe in the comprehensive plan, when we look at that, require that if it's zoned multifamily, that's the option you have.
Yes. And we'll need to make sure that we analyze it with our most recent housing and buildable lands analysis and housing needs analysis as well, because we would not want to downzone to protect the, I guess what, there's some thoughts I've had on how to address those single-family structures in existing residential medium zones. But we'll want to make sure that we're not downzoning residential medium to single-family when we need to make sure that we have that capacity for additional housing for the future needs. But yes, that, that is exactly something that would be part of the comprehensive plan. But prior to that, this conversation of should we require a minimum density of 25 units per acre in the residential medium will be, I think, some of the meat of the conversation and potential, the public hearing as we move forward with this design standards.
Okay.
In the site design, there was a question about lot coverage increase. We did, I did propose increasing our lot coverage for multifamily structures. Our existing code for all uses has a 45 percentage maximum lock coverage, building coverage, I should use, using an old term from an old jurisdiction. 45% maximum building coverage is what currently is our standard. There's the same step back, same setbacks for all uses and allows front-loaded garage access for multifamilies. In the public draft code, there's a 60% maximum building coverage for multifamily. So, multifamily uses are the only ones that got additional lot coverage allowance in the proposed ordinance. There was a reduction in the front setbacks for multifamily. However, there's also language in there that prohibits front-loaded access for multifamily. You either need to access your vehicle from the side, side-street access or rear-loaded if you're, if you're doing a, like an apartment complex. We don't want that parking to be the first thing you see from the roadway.
And the, the parking is included in that coverage calculation?
No, the building coverage is actually just structural buildings.
Okay. So, we, we have had before this commission issues related to inadequate amount of land to put appropriate numbers of parking spaces for the buildings, which necessitated some shared use agreements. I also have a concern in multifamily that we don't lose the ability to provide playground areas or outdoor spaces for those families that are living in multifamily, so they're not just in big boxes covering most of the property. So, I don't know how we address that because it seems to be contradictory.
There still is the requirement for the outdoor active play areas for multifamily structures in the, in the residential medium zone.
That's great, as long as we're not counting little decks for each apartment as that outdoor area.
No, no, there is a common, a common shared space that is required. And then we also require that private space, private outdoor space, which would be your balcony.
Okay.
I don't want to lose your comment about, so a few things that the commission and the council have done since I've been with the city, so we've reduced our parking requirements for multifamily structures from two to one and a half stalls per unit. We are still seeing with conversations on potential developers and in pre-apps that there still might be a constraint because of our lot sizes and existing lot sizes that we have within the city. So, I'm not sure that we will need, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't have the answer quite yet, but parking, I think, will still need to be something that we continue to keep in the forefront of our mind as we move forward with how, how to allow and make sure that we get enough parking, but also provide enough of the housing that's needed. And I do want to correct myself. I said parking stalls and parking lots do not count as building coverage, but if they were carports, they would.
If they're coverage.
So, if you had a carport or a garage, that is building coverage.
Okay. Gary, do you have questions?
I have a question because I'm, I'm wondering if this is the time to bring it up, but I, I'm trying to get workforce housing somehow in my mind.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that we have all the terminology in the world, but the workforce housing being housing that the workforce can actually afford, okay? And, and not, not semi-pro kind of coverage or, you know, professional kind of coverage. And, and I know that regulations cost money, and, and I, I'm wondering if we, if, if it's a point in time where we create a specific zoning issue where we could zone in a kind of different zone that we could actually, you know, encourage developers who would come in and build. I, and I, you know, I don't like the term projects or slums or whatever, because everybody's going to use that term the moment you start talking about trying to make housing affordable for somebody making $14 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
But we are, we're seeing businesses right now significantly adversely affected by not having employees that can afford to live here, okay? I know some business owners right now who have shut down their hours because they can't find workers in town to work for them. And they're, and they're looking for people that are stoned now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're, they're not even, they have no, they, they're not looking for the best worker. They're looking for any, anybody with blood still moving in their system, and they can't find them.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and we're doing that to them, okay? Our zoning, that, if we can't get a developer to come in here and build, and I hate the cheap housing, I don't know what, you know, I, affordable housing, workforce affordable housing, and I don't know how to get to that spot because we haven't, we haven't built a unit. I've been here six years, we haven't built a unit, and I don't expect we ever will.
We have, we have had an apartment complex that just got finalized.
For how much?
They're a thousand, it's $1,000 a month for a two-bedroom.
I know, and $740 is the number I'm looking at-
Yeah.
-as affordable for these people. And, and we haven't built a unit for that price in six years, and, and I've been wanting to this whole time, and we haven't done it. And I know nobody wants it in their backyard. I understand that 100%. We have to make it work somehow, or we're going to lose businesses.
Mm-hmm.
We are going to lose, we're going to have a failure of our business group here because they can't get employees.
I too worry about that, but I'm afraid that the city is going to have to bite the bullet to provide land at a subsidized cost unless it, for housing to be rentable at 750 a month instead of 1,000. And those apartments I've looked at, because I was in the market, they are small, two-bedroom apartments. They are not, they're luxurious looking, I think, but they don't fit regular-sized furniture.
Well, we, as, as you are aware, the city is working on addressing some workforce housing. We are in agreements with some of our lands, and hopefully we'll see some action being taken and, and something actually coming in and moving a little faster, you know?
Yeah, I, I probably, I know I'm kind of asking the impossible because I realize, looking at the world today, that's not real easy.
Well, I think what you bring up is a really good point, though, Gary, is that as the commission and as staff, we should be looking at that equity lens of affordability and is, are these standards going to help us reach those goals of, of maybe your own personal goals or even our council goals that have been identified? So, I, I do think it is worthwhile to keep in the forefront as we look at reviewing these design standards.
Thank you.
Steve?
I, you're taking some general questions now or comments?
Yeah.
Okay, I, just one correction on page 367, Article 1E. No, not that one. It's page 367B. Under character types, the second sentence that begins with, "For properties within a designated pearl or along a string or designated high-use street," the requirements of the pearls apply. I believe that's incorrect. It's inconsistent with the meaning of the first sentence of that paragraph.
Wait, so are you in 1774-020A?
Page 367B, character types.
Okay.
And the paragraph begins, "For commercial zones, different regulations apply depending on whether a property is within a designated pearl, along a street, or along a designated high-use street."
Yes.
And then the second sentence is the one that's incorrect, I think. Is that correct? Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, because then the second sentence says, "For properties within a designated pearl or along the string or a designated high-use street, the requirements of the pearls apply."
So, the commercial zones aren't just along pearls, strings, or high-use streets, and I think that this might be what they were trying to get at, but I think that there needs to definitely be a better way of expressing that commercial zones, and you're not in a pearl, you're not on a string, and you're not on a high-use street, but you're still in a commercial zone, these standards still apply. But additional standards apply if you're in any of those areas.
Just to be clear up a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Very clear.
And then, let's see. I like the fact that design standards address maintaining views to the ocean, and I'd like to see that something like that in our sign code. And I was wondering, you mentioned drive-throughs, and we have quite a few drive-throughs in Lincoln City, and I was wondering whether we might exclude drive-throughs in the pearls. And I really, you know, for encouraging pedestrian use, I'm not sure we want cars lined up with their engines running, waiting to go through a drive-through, and especially if we're going to be implementing a new ordinance that would allow food trucks. And I think that will take up that market. And then the other thing is, there's a lot of information on weather protection for pedestrian areas, and I'm, I for one, question whether that's really needed considering, you know, southern exposures and west, western exposures get a lot of wind, and even if you have weather protection, you're going to get wet if you're under the weather protection. And then there was one area, I think on page 396, where it said protections, weather protection areas could be made out of glass. We live in an earthquake zone, and that's the last material that you want used.
What page are you on now?
That's on page 396. That's on page three ninety-six.
Three ninety-six.
We don't want weather protection areas made out of glass.
Yeah, it's number K four.
And what, why would you, I've seen some really aesthetically pleasing ones made out of glass.
Aesthetically, it can be pleasing, but it's not safe. And if we have an earthquake, most people in earthquakes are killed fleeing a building and having the buttresses and the facades fall down on them as they're fleeing the building. And it's glass, you don't want glass shattering, you know, falling on people.
Okay. We'll make sure those are noted.
Would tempered glass?
Yeah, the building code would have required, it'd be tempered and structurally engineered.
And do we have a design review board?
Uh, no, not yet, that's my next step. You guys want to be on it?
Yeah.
It'd be every two weeks.
Well, I was.
Probably an alternating Tuesday from this.
Do you want the design review board to also address the issue of signs, maybe, you know, upcoming?
No. No, design, design review board specifically is architects, designers of structures, site design, sign, sign design would not, that would not fall within the professional.
Not of site design, but we're thinking ahead of new ways to do signs, you know, whether that board might want to review the new technology that's coming up, to see if it would be appropriate for Lincoln City or not.
Yeah, I don't think that that tip, I've never seen a design review board do signage, but I can look into it. I was just up in Seattle last week, and I was driving by, and I saw this big sign that's about twenty-five feet in the air, and must have been erected in nineteen sixty, it was super cool. I was like, that is a really cool sign, very modern, very, you know, just historic. But I was thinking about it, I'm like, why don't we see those anymore? Well, we've got building codes that, wind factors, engineering requirements, you know, a lot of, a lot of things that can require or ultimately end up designing it for you. I think that it would be potentially arbitrary to have a design review board say the face of that sign looks good, but the face of this sign doesn't. And so, I would be cautious about having someone review signage. Now, I have seen design review boards.
More in terms of the tech, whether the technology would be appropriate for the, for our town, you know, that's more, not in terms of the content of the sign at all, or how it looks, but, you know, do we want?
I think that's more of a planning commission. I think that's more of a planning commission role and task, I really do. I don't know that architects are, you know, up to speed on the technology of signs, per se, whereas more so than what is good aesthetics, or how to establish good aesthetics with a limited budget.
Other questions?
I do, but I'll save them for later.
Lindsey, do you have more?
Yeah, I've got seventeen seventy-four, which, I'll just kind of go over, jumped ahead here. The majority of the regulations can be found in seventeen seventy-four, I'm going back to the PowerPoint. Because I just want to point out kind of some of the things. So, as Steve talked about, there is view protection, there's no requirements in the existing code, there are new guidelines for north to south streets, requiring a two-hundred-foot maximum length of buildings within pearls, a three-hundred-foot maximum length for buildings outside of pearls, and then a minimum of a twenty-five-foot distance between building I've seen view protection done in a variety of ways in Washington State under their Shoreline Management Act, it is required as a percentage of the lot size or the lot width based upon, it is literally only the lot right in front of the water, though. I think that this will be something that I would really like the commission to consider and think about scale, and drive around some of those pearls that do reach out all the way to the ocean, and is two-hundred a little too much still, or does that work? Do we, you know, there's also going to be requirements for those buildings, if you have a two-hundred-foot-long building, you're going to have a lot of modulation and articulation and a lot of other design standards that need to be applied. So, keeping that in mind. Something else that I would like the commission to consider is significant improvement. Right now, the code defines significant.
Is it alteration or improvement?
A significant alteration or improvement, I may be misquoting one of those terms, is when the building is being proposed for a remodel that exceeds fifty percent of its assessed value. You know, if we reduced that, we could see a lot more improvements to some structures. If someone's already wanting to pony up for a remodel, and why should they not bring the rest of the building into our current standards, or at least add some nexus that could be identified for that? So.
So, we have building owners who won't bring their building up to a code sufficient to hold a sign, but they're going to step right up to the plate and want to redo the building?
Well, I mean, that's the thing, you may not want to redo the building design standards, but does the community want it? And if that's the case, do we really want to allow someone to piecemeal, I'm only going to do a forty percent improvement this year, and a forty percent improvement next year, so on and so forth?
Right.
Until they never have the design that is actually what the code's intending?
Sure, but again, that's, that's an enforcement issue, how do you predict whether they're going to come in next year with an additional?
Well, and similar to what we talked about at the last meeting with the FEMA and the substantial improvements, as far as, you know, there's, there's methods where we could create a, if you make so many improvements over fifty percent of the value in a five-year timeframe, you have to bring it, you know. Now, any new additions would have to meet the current standards. So, but changes to the structure, like if someone wants to change out windows, we'd probably say, well, you need to meet our transparency requirements, and you can't put in a bunch of small windows, you need to meet our forty percent or sixty percent, or whatever the percentage is, depending on their structure. If they want to adjust their parking lot, should we require them to put landscape in? I think yes. You know, but if it's not fifty percent of the total value, currently, the code doesn't require it. So, it's something, it's not just structures, but it's all total site improvements where the design standards come into play.
So, the, the first time we may actually see these new design standards put into practice could be the villages.
Potentially, yeah. So, anything, assuming that this is adopted in October with, by city council or so, or around there, anything that would come in after that would have to meet these. So, whatever site plan, whatever, anything, well, anything in a residential medium zone or a general commercial zone. Right now, the villages are zoned R1, so.
There's no commercial suggested for?
There's no commercial zone at this point in time, but there is something moving forward that you guys will see at the next meeting for a land use map amendment. But keep in mind, this is, and that was something that I had a really hard time grasping on when I first came in, was that it's the zone and not the type of structure. Where my previous life, it was the type of structure that had to meet specific design standards, regardless of the zone it was in. But this was the way that the project was set up, and I was coming in towards the end, so we just needed to move it forward without expending more money. Right now, we've no, as regards to materials and color, for materials, there's no substantial changes. And then for colors, pearls would allow for brighter colors, which are also requesting subtle earth tones or preferred. Strings or high-use streets, it's low reflectant shades.
So, I'm sorry, would you say that again?
Pearls, yes.
The sentence before pearls?
Colors?
Yeah, colors.
So, for colors, there's no primary colors specified in our existing code. We don't direct or request any specific colors for design throughout the city.
Okay, and so we don't?
In the public draft code, what's proposed is for pearls to allow for brighter colors and subtle earth tones are the preference. Strings or high-use streets?
Those, those don't.
Let me read the code itself.
Well.
Brighter colors and subtle.
Subtle earth tones seem to be on opposite sides.
Well, you can do a subtle hot pink.
Really?
I have a beautiful peony in my front yard. Let's see here, what's this in seventeen seventy-four? Materials and color, so. Facade colors in string or high-use streets, the base colors must be low reflectant shades of any hue. Natural wood finishes are encouraged, building trim may feature brighter colors as accents. For facade colors and pearls, in keeping with the eclectic nature of individual pearls, neighborhood associations or area business associations may choose color palettes that will take precedent within the specified area for new building, exteriors, or repainting. Otherwise, base colors must be low reflectant shades of any hue. Muted and subtle earth tones or neutral colors are preferred as the primary colors of buildings. Brighter colors may be acceptable if colors are similar to those on adjacent buildings. Much different than the PowerPoint I recognize, so.
It almost sounds like you've got opposing statements there anyways, because you have, it's a kind of, we want this, but you go ahead and use this.
Yeah, so, yeah, muted and subtle earth tones or neutral colors are preferred, but brighter colors may be acceptable if you can find them nearby.
Well, yeah, there's a couple brighter ones on the way up the street.
That does not follow the standards now, or in prefers.
Now that they're there, their neighbors could go, you got it.
Boing! It wasn't over percentage value to require, you know, there's some, some things with that one.
The circus is in town.
You know, I really think that that covers the majority of it. We did put some specific building design elements for Cutler City, D-Lake, and Wakoma, because those are the three pearls in city that do not have specific design standards already in code. We did not change the specific design standards for Ocean Lake, Taft, or Nell Scott, and do not intend to.
You don't intend, you didn't see anything in those that we might want to change?
No, and the, what I heard and what I reviewed from the public input was, let's create senses of place for the pearls that haven't had that specific analysis and design already completed.
And then another question, once the new design standards are approved, will we put in a table for, that would match the table you have for the design standards for Wakoma, and include Nell Scott and Taft, so all of it is right there in the same place?
Well, so the Taft Zone, Nell Scott Zone, and Ocean Lake Zones have their own chapters within Title Seventeen.
Right.
So, we would not create a one-table spot for those, because they would, the rest of the standards would be in there. I think that could be something, though, as we move into the future and potentially make additional changes, then we could create, and what I've seen in other jurisdictions, the design review standards are about this thick, and they are their own chapter within a title for every type of use or structure. We did copy the tables, though, from those other zones to establish these tables for Cutler City, Taft, and Ocean Lake that you can see for the location-specific standards. So, with that, I hope that you get an opportunity to take close review of seventeen seventy-four and seventeen twenty. We will be receiving the finals of our public test, I guess, our public survey, and we should have the summary of that by the July second meeting. However, the public hearing, you know, and those really will be coming into effect, is making sure that when we take testimony at the public hearing and we propose to make edits or adjustments or changes to the regulations, that we consider all of the written comments that have occurred on record to date.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful for the commissioners to, if not take the survey, at least review it, review the questions, so that when we do get the results from the survey, we understand what questions were being asked, and maybe even take the survey.
You can also go to the city's department page on lincolncity.org, go down to the Planning and Community Development site. Scroll down towards the bottom, and there'll be a link for the Design Standards Project 2018, 2019, and it has all of the packets, minutes, PowerPoints, and information that's occurred since the beginning of this project. So, I would just let you know that there is historical reference materials there, if you want to go back to them, to kind of refresh on what people were saying last summer, and where we're getting to.
Okay.
Has there been a good online response so far to the survey?
I requested updates, within the first five days, we had six people respond, so I'm really begging that we get some more input on that, so that we know what to prepare for and what adjustments are necessary to be changed. I want to hear from our general residents that have to live and drive by and shop in these structures, I want to hear from builders that are constructing and designing the structures, and I want to hear from businesses that have to live and operate within them, to see if we really are making and meeting where we want to be for the next thirty years. These standards can impact the effect of the city for the next twenty or thirty years, as it takes time to truly see them in practice.
Have you gone out after builders and the people you mentioned to supplement the six that you've had?
We have sent it out to our interested parties list, and those that have participated through the public outreach projects and everything up to this date. So, we sent it all back out to those that had participated via email. We also held our final PAC, our PAC meeting on it, I believe that was earlier this month or late May.
And I also met with Kiwanis last Thursday and the Chamber last Friday, and at both of those meetings, I talked about the design standards and the survey and the sign ordinance revisions. So, I've requested all of those individuals to take the survey as well.
Okay. All right. Okay, Planning Commission training.
There will be no training this evening.
Okay.
But Gary, have you finished my book?
My book?
Okay. We'll pass it along to Patty next.
Yeah, pass it on to me next. Okay. All right. Reports and comments. Okay, I have one question.
Yeah.
We're fast approaching the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Last year, there was quite a bit of public comment after the Fourth of July with regards to a different approach to maybe deal with some of the fireworks, the unlawful fireworks displays that occur and some of the activity. And I know that Ron Chandler had discussed a three-pronged approach that he was going to take, one was education, one was enforcement, and another, I think, was an alternative to people setting their own fireworks off by maybe developing other things.
Programs.
Other programs. Other programs. So I, I went online looking for any material on the website. I did find an article about fireworks and what's, what's legal and what isn't legal. It's, it's nested, it was difficult to find. I also found a flyer that was lovely, but difficult to find. Nothing on the Explore Lincoln City site whatsoever regarding illegal fireworks and the potential to be ticketed or cited for those. And what I'm asking is, in the planning department's role as managing the VRDs, I'm wondering if Weston is placing those flyers or requesting those flyers be placed in every VRD, if they're being distributed to hotels and apartments? And how, how is this lovely flyer that was put together that's keep it legal, keep it safe, being distributed in the city in advance of the celebration?
You know, I do know that our executive assistant had just printed those earlier this week and started distributing them. They, we have some on the public works counter. I know that it's in our administrative's office. I believe that they're posted on our bulletin boards throughout town. Planning has not been contacted directly to ask for any of that distribution. I can talk with Weston to see if there is a way to inform, I think it would be more on the property management side, to just make sure they're aware and maybe put it on their websites if they're specific to Lincoln City. But I can, I'll look into that. I'll bring that up in my meeting tomorrow morning and, and ask administration if there's anything planning should be doing to, to make sure that information gets out.
That would be great, because I, you know, I appreciate them being posted in businesses here in town and, and at the planning desk, but I don't know that many visitors that come here for the Fourth of July would see those, whereas if they're renting a location or in a, in a hotel or some other establishment in town, they might have a better chance of seeing it.
Was there a secondary question of asking if, if Explore Lincoln City is using social media or anything?
Well, you know, if I was thinking like a tourist, that's where I would go. That's the website I would go to, to find out what was going on. And if that is our main electronic media outlet for information about the city, I would think that would be a logical place to put the educational information regarding the fireworks in town and the fact that they're not legal on state beaches, parks, et cetera. So, just trying to think like a tourist, where would I look for information, and that would be the spot. So I was a little surprised it wasn't there.
I can bring that up.
Thank you.
I do have a report and comment. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but St. Augustine did some landscaping this weekend in their frontage on one oh one.
I can see that.
And I just, I want to thank them for that. That was not something that was required. There was no, you know, they, they did it on their own accord to beautify their own property.
Looks great.
It is, it does look great. I think it'll look even better as they establish over the next, you know, year or two, but just taking the initiative to go, come out and, and spruce up the place was, it really made me happy, and I came back into town on Monday, hadn't worked. It's like, oh, yay!
It does look great.
Let me add a follow-up to that.
Yeah.
Not only did they do it voluntarily, but they came to the planning office, and he asked me to go over his little plan that he had put together to make sure that it generally followed the code, and so he looked at the recommended list of plans.
Excellent.
So...
Yay!
They even went the, the extra step. So kudos.
Great, good job. They get a star. Okay, future agenda items in next meeting, sounds like we're going to continue these work sessions?
Yes, we will have signs and design review standards for the July second meeting. We do have a public hearing scheduled for July sixteenth, just to give you guys a heads up. There will be an ordinance on emergency caches and placements of those that flood...
That's the public hearing topic?
That would be a public hearing topic. We have not work-studied that, however, it is a minor ordinance amendment allowing emergency caches to be placed within specific zones, and this was requested from our emergency management coordinator. We also have a public hearing on the FEMA flood maps and code amendments, and a public hearing ordinance for docks and permitting standards for docks on Devil's Lake. I was considering work-studying something that evening, but the looks of you guys is...
Sounds pretty full. Yeah. Okay, sounds great. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.